Evening. Welcome to the May 15th, May 15th, City Council Meeting, and I call it to order. And we have a special guest tonight who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and her name is Lana Smith. Lana, would you please come forward to the podium? And would everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So before we let you go Lana, we have a few questions for you. And the first one is, which school do you go to?
I go to Singer Ridge Elementary.
And what grade are you in?
I'm in fourth grade.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Cole Thorpe.
Okay. I know her. Tell Ms. Cole Thorpe I said hi, okay? What's your favorite subject?
Reading.
Okay. And what's your favorite thing to do outside of school?
Riding horses.
Say it again.
Riding horses.
Riding horses. And your favorite horse or the name of the horse?
Buddy.
Buddy, okay. Very good. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a doctor at the VA.
She wants to be a doctor at the VA. I'm gonna come down there and we're gonna take a picture now, okay? Thank you. The first one is for the state champion bowling team, Coach Dennis Anderson and David Baldwin and team. Okay, here we go. Whereas Stillwater High School Bowling Team competed in the Oklahoma High School Bowling State Championship match in Tulsa on March 4th, 2017, and whereas Stillwater has had a high school bowling team for 15 years and is coached this year by Dennis Anderson and David Baldwin, and whereas 16 high school teams competed in the championship round, whereas Stillwater qualified after bowling eight games and were selected second to bowl against defending state champion Lauton Eisenhower, and whereas Stillwater won the championship by winning the best of five matches in just four matches to become the state champions for the first time. Now, therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim, May 15th, 2017, as Stillwater High School Bowling Championship Day in Stillwater. Congratulations! Okay, our second proclamation is Stillwater Public Works Authority.
Public Works Week.
It's kinda hard to follow that, isn't it, with Public Works Week? Okay, here we go. Public Works Week. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of the citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas -- I'm so sorry, come here. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services and facilities, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2017, in the City of Stillwater as Public Works Week. And with that, I will let you -- Okay, so we have Mark White. Are you gonna call?
It's Paul DeAndre.
Okay. And, no, okay, okay.
Thanks. I'd just like to say that we're looking forward to the Public Works Week. We've got some good things planned. We'll be in the elementary schools with our Touch a Truck Program. So we'll be there Monday through Thursday, and kids will get to see some of the operations trucks. I'm the operations manager, and so we'll have our vehicles out there. We'll also have some from electric, from waste management, so the kids will get to experience kinda what we do on a daily basis and just see how we do it, so.
I'm Paul DeAndre. I'm the president of the Oklahoma Chapter of American Public Works Association, so I wanted to be here tonight. We sponsor the National Public Works Week all over the nation. We wanna just say thank you to the City of Stillwater for helping us support our National Public Works Week and the efforts of all our public works professionals. Thank you.
And you will do the presentations for this, right? Okay, and this is for the Rhodes Scholar certifications, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Noble. My name is Doug Wright. I'm the director of the Center for Local Government Technology at Oklahoma State University. And if you're not familiar with that organization, it's an outreach unit of the engineering college. And with me today is Michael Hinkston, and we have several programs that we run out there. One of them is called the Local Technical Assistance Program, which is funded through the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration, and Michael is the manager of that program. And through that program, he does 50 some-odd classes that we do. Some of those classes we'll do several times a year, some only every couple of years, but we have a core curriculum of classes that we call the Rhodes Scholar, excuse me, Program. It's eight classes altogether. It's about 112 hours of instruction. And when individuals complete that program, we like to honor them with the awarding of a completion certificate. So that's what we're here to do today. And there's three gentlemen from the City of Stillwater. Unfortunately, only one of them's gonna be here tonight, but these guys are a bit unique in that these are the first three recipients of this completion certificate from the City of Stillwater. And we have to thank Sharla Lovren for getting these guys in class, and before her, Jason Peak. And so they kinda initiated the City of Stillwater personnel coming to these classes, so we need to thank them for that. And so anyway, you know, like I say, we like to recognize the individuals that complete the program and try to make a big deal about it, because it is. They put a lot of time and effort into doing this, and so we like to do it at venues like this. So we'll get these guys up here, and Michael, why don't you come and hand them to them here? And the first recipient is Kevin Crew from the Construction Inspector.
And his daughter.
And his daughter. All right, the next two individuals couldn't be here tonight, but I understand Mark White's gonna accept them for them. And the first one's for Lance Blaser, who's a crew leader, and the other one's for Jerry Upshaw, who's a drainage crew chief. You know, we have these guys in our classes, you know, and, you know, with, there's eight classes altogether, so we kinda get acquainted with them after a while, and we've really been impressed with the personnel in general from the City of Stillwater. They've made a good impression on us, so, thank you.
And finally, we have Rex Largent and Terry Wheeler. Are you here? This is for Kiwanis Club Officer of the Year, and I'm going to let them take over.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience, and fellow Kiwanians, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation making each May 15th Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls, National Police Week. So through the assistance of the Stillwater News Press, Captain Gibbs, and the community, we were able to receive nominations for this year's award, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Terry.
City councilors and members of the audience, our purpose this evening is to announce the winner of the first annual Stillwater Kiwanis Club's Police Officer of the Year. This was a big decision for our clubs as several good nominations were submitted. Our screening committee narrowed the search down to their favorite three, whom I will gladly name. Our two runner-ups were Special Projects Detective Newby McSpadden, who uses a canine partner assistant, and Officer Paul Blankenship, who is a school research officer for three Stillwater schools. After furthest consideration, our Kiwanis Clubs Committee selected the Stillwater Police Officer, who was the lead detective in two separate, highly visible cases that occurred in Stillwater. In 2014, a first-degree manslaughter case in which Alex Verling was fatally shot, and in 2015, the homecoming crash case in which four people died and 42 people were injured. This resulted in four charges of second-degree murder and 42 counts of assault and battery by means of force likely to cause death. Imagine the incredible amount of record-keeping and paperwork required to bring this case to trial. Our award winner was the lead detective in both of these cases. At this time, we proudly present the first annual Stillwater Kiwanis Club Police Officer of the Year to Stillwater Police Inspector Greg Miller.
Councilors, does anyone wish to make a motion to approve, or does anyone want to remove or clarify an item?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. And with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Okay, that takes us to item number seven, which is public hearings. Receive public comment regarding a request from Signify Epsilon for a map amendment to rezone property at 1121 West Fourth Avenue from RTM Residential Two-Family and Multi-Family to RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate District CC-17-78. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
I will give it to Mr. McNichol.
And presenting that report tonight, and probably others, is our Director of Development Services, Paula Dennison.
Good evening, Paula Dennison, Development Services. What we have before you this evening is a map amendment or rezoning request for the SIGEP fraternity. And this property is located, as you can see, in the hatched area at Fourth and Lincoln. The yellow gold is RTM, and that is their current zoning. The purple around it is office zoning, and the brown on the north side of Fourth Avenue is the RMI, and that is the Residential Multi-Family Intermediate, that is a step above the RTM, and that is what they are seeking this evening for their rezoning. Here's a street view of the property as it currently exists. And in your packets, there was a comparison table between the RTM and the RMI. Two things to notice, that multifamily is allowed in each of these zoning districts in their current. It's limited to 20 units per acre. In what they're requesting, it goes up to 30 units per acre. And then also, the structure height. Current zoning, it's limited to 35 feet. Their request is limited to 50 feet. They are proposing to demo and rebuild the fraternity house, and taking it to RMI will alleviate the need to seek any variances, in particular on height. And as you saw on the zoning map, the RMI is all on the north side of Fourth Avenue. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for this request.
Councilors?
No questions.
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And we have Kelly Harris.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owners tonight. And we feel this rezoning request would just allow us to rebuild the house and really in line with the other fraternities and sororities without going to the Board of Adjustments to ask for those variances that would be required. So if you have any other questions, just let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
All right, so I guess I will close the public hearing at this time and ask staff if there is a recommendation.
Yes, the Planning Commission does recommend approval of the request on a six oh vote.
Thank you. Councilors, discussion or a motion?
Motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-17-78. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, CC-17-78 is approved. That moves us to item B. Receive public comment regarding a request from Good Grove Companies, Inc. for a map amendment to rezone property at 702 South Jardo Avenue, Jardo Road, from MH Mobile Manufactured Home to RTM Residential Two-Family and Multi-Family District CC-17-77. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
And Paula will retain the podium for a while.
Thank you for the reminder. Once again, this is a map amendment rezoning for property located on South Jardo. Anyone who has been around town for a while will recognize this piece of property that is hatched, a former mobile home park, south of Highway 51. This is Sixth Avenue up here at the north. So you have the storage company, and it was immediately behind it. The mobile homes have been removed. They've been gone a couple of years. And everything to the north in the red is zoned general commercial. The dark brown of which this is, is the residential mobile or manufactured home zoning district. And as you can see, there are existing mobile and manufactured homes around it. Immediately to the west, the property is zoned small lot, single-family residential. Here's a street view of the property. You can tell it has, the streets are still in, the pavement is still in, as you could see on the aerial also. There's electric lines, utilities, mains are still in the property. The applicant is requesting the RTM zoning to redevelop more of an infill, even though it's on the eastern portion of town, it's more of an infill development instead of going further out, because they already have the driveways and the street access and, for the most part, the utilities that they need. So comparison tables, the RTM request will allow up to 20 units per acre in multifamily development, and that is the rezoning that they are seeking. Practically, the other items are close enough to not have a huge difference between an individual mobile home space and the apartment buildings that will be built with multiple units in each building. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this property, and we are really glad to see some infill and redevelopment of property.
Councilors, any questions?
No.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. We have one speaker, Jennifer McCabe. If you would come forward and tell us your address.
My name is Jennifer McCabe. My address is 45402 Hardesty Road in Shawnee. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant and on behalf of the developer to answer any questions that you guys may have. And thank you for having me.
Okay. Any questions?
Sounds like a good deal.
It does.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And Ms. Dennison.
Yes, Planning Commission also on this recommends approval on a six oh vote.
Councilors, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-17-77. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, it's approved. That moves us to item C. And receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit from Oklahoma Stillwater Perkins LLC for a healthcare and social assistance use dental office in the CS Commercial Shopping District at 2307 North Perkins Road. This is continued from May 1st, 2017. It's CC-17-79. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
I would go ahead.
Okay, okay. All right, Mr. McNichol.
Paula Dennison will provide the report.
This is a specific use permit. Y'all are aware of an SUP as we acronym it, and it is an item that is somewhat compatible, but not fully compatible with the other uses in the zoning district. Therefore, it requires special permission through the Planning Commission and City Council. The area that we have hatched in the Bowl Black is right at the northeast corner of Perkins Road and Lakeview Road. This is the academy property that has been developed with Neighborhood Market and the Walmart fuel station. This is the proposed site for the Aspen Dental. To note, directly catty-cornered across the intersection is another dental in the CS, and when it was developed, it also came through and was granted a specific use permit, but that has been a few years ago. Here's a layout of the property. They will not be taking direct access to Perkins or Lakeview Road. They will utilize the internal access roads that are part of the development. What I will note here, if you look closely, you can see a couple of lines going through the building. Their SUP request for this evening is for full use of their entire building. However, if they have an opportunity, they do have these two spaces that they have identified for potential tenant space in the overall building portion, but they are requesting full use for the dental property at this time. Here's a street view. As you can see, they've already started the earthwork for the pad for the building itself. And I will make one more comment. The dentist office is located within the bounds of the North Perkins Road Tiff, which does have additional restrictions above and beyond the zoning and the building restrictions that are currently under city code. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilors.
What's the effect of, I mean, if they want to rent out those other two spaces, do they have to get another permit? Does it, I mean, do they have to, how does that work?
They, they're gonna go ahead and build it as if they could just go in and almost cosmetically put in those separation walls. They would need permits for them. But the uses, in order to not come back through for SUP request, the uses would be more in line with the CS uses that are allowed by right.
Okay, so if they wanted to do something there that wasn't within the CS, they'd have to come back and get a special permit?
Yes, they would.
In that specific space still?
Yes, they would.
Other questions? Okay, is there, okay, all right. I will open the public hearing, and we don't have anyone to speak on that, so I will close the public hearing and ask Ms. --
Well, at this point, given that there is the, that this sits at the North Perkins Road Tiff, did somebody, I think he requested to speak.
I did not get Stephen's request.
I didn't see it.
I didn't get it.
Well, evidently so did your dad, and we didn't get that one. I was just informed by email a minute ago, so.
It's up to you. If you want to let him speak, I mean, you have the, you're the chair.
Stephen Ghost with Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th, here on behalf of the applicant just to answer any questions who all may have, so. But Paula's report and staff report covered everything from our side, so.
Any questions? Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask Ms. Dennison to come back, or Mr. Dorman, you look like you want to tell me something.
Well, we've been in contact with the owner of the property, the North Park, whatever they call themselves, the Whitson Group. Anyways, they are, were, are required under the development agreement to submit plans, architectural plans to CEDA for review before the property can be developed. They have told us that they're going to submit them, but as of 5:00 today, they had not done so. So before you move forward on this, my recommendation would be to table this until CEDIS had an opportunity to make their review and make their recommendation, because there are implications with regard to the type of use that is proposed here.
Okay. Do we have, is there a motion to table?
How much, how much time do we, I mean, if we table now, when do we put it back, when do we look at this again?
Well, CEDA probably, I mean, the next meeting that CEDA could possibly hear this would be June 1st, so I would at least move it to that date.
Motion to table to June 1st.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table until June 1st. And with a vote of five to zero, we are tabling CC-17-78. And with a vote of five to zero, we are tabling CC-17-79 until June 1st. Thank you. That takes us to item D. Receive public comment regarding a request for closing of a permanent easement and right-of-way located on property addressed at 1220 West 12th Avenue, CC-17-75. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this? Mr. McNichol.
Ms. Dennison is providing that report as well.
This is a little different again. Closing requests just come directly to the City Council. I know I remind you all of this every time I get up here, but we don't hear them all the time. So there will not be a recommendation from Planning Commission like with some of the other items. It will come directly from staff. But this is an easement and right-of-way closing request on property at 1220 West 12th Avenue. This RSS piece is the property in question. The green on the screen indicates all of the easements that are in the area. The hatched area, this purple, is the request before you this evening. There are no utilities directly located in this area. There's a sewer main that runs south of it with a manhole close to the requested area to close. And prior to the actual closing and vacating, then there will be a new easement filed with the city for acceptance over that manhole, so it can still be accessed by city staff. Here's a view of the site. It's currently vacant. And once again, thought an aerial would be real good representation to you. This is the piece that is requested to be closed this evening. It is immediately adjacent to a larger easement, which covers the sidewalk as well as a smidgen of the 12th Avenue right-of-way. Happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, questions?
The report notes that it was obtained in 2008.
Yes.
Just wondering why such a quick, like, we got the easement and now we don't need the easement? Did we acquire it for a specific reason?
Yes, it was a part of the 12th Avenue widening. At the time, uncertain, as we're working through the, the development plans for the widening of 12th Avenue, what all would be needed for that project. So now, later, in looking at it, that is no longer needed. Just a small piece that they will come back in and dedicate around the manhole.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. And the first, the only speaker is Deborah Meinke. Okay, I will close the pub, oh.
Again, Stephen Ghost, Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th. In addition, the easement, we're dedicating five feet along the entire eastern property line of the larger tract that's adjacent to a five-foot easement that was dedicated with the plat to the east. So it gets access. It was requested by staff at IRC for that. And then five foot along, probably about a third of the frontage on 12th Avenue to address that. And those documents have been provided to, to staff already, so. Any other questions? I'm here.
Questions?
No. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing. Ms. Dennison.
Staff does recommend approval of the closing request.
Counselors, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-17-75. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, 17-75 is approved. That takes us to item E. Receive public comment regarding the proposed 12th Avenue land use plan and land development code amendments, CC-17-76. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Dennison. Mr. McNichol, Ms. Dennison.
Thank you. Just briefly for the audience, back in October of 2016, there was a rezoning request for property in the area that I'll show you a map of here in a moment. At the January 23rd City Council meeting, the council voted to table, postpone the rezoning request in order for staff to conduct a public process to evaluate the comprehensive plan for the area, and as part of that, to see what outcomes from that public process. This is the presentation of the results of that public planning process that, that was conducted. Here is an area of the map. The hatched in the purple is the study area. The property in question is this right here, the 1220 West 12th, the closing that you just had. This is the area in question. You will see immediately following this item on the agenda, this lot on the east side of Washington Street. It also came in after the planning process was, was directed to staff to begin. This property came in with a rezoning and a specific use permit, and those items have also been postponed until the planning process was completed. So the purple hatched area is the study area. What is outlined in red is the notification area. As part of the notification, even outside of this area in red, there were a number of citizens throughout the community that did not live or own property in the study or notification area that had concerns, just interested citizens. So they also were invited to participate in this process as well. We, we carried through objectives for the planning process. The objectives, two objectives that staff had identified early on were a vision for the study area, whether that vision was no change, or that vision was change, then what? The then what would be any changes to laws and guiding documents that the city of Stillwater has in order to, to oversee any growth and development. There were a number of, of methods of public input that were taken, and in your packet, you will have the results of those. We had a survey through Survey Monkey. We had public input meetings. We had some polling. We had direct mailings. We had lots of emails. We also had e-notifications through Stillwater.org. And that was a learning experience for me, because I did not know that we had those capabilities for folks to just sign up for whatever they wanted to be notified of through the website. So that was, that's a great resource and tool. I'm plugging that for anybody in Stillwater that wants to sign up for e-notifications. We also had a schedule that we had developed early on, going from early March through, of course, tonight, May 15th, at the City Council meeting. And believe it or not, we were able to stick with this schedule. This was a, a pretty fast-paced schedule, but the area of the study area was fairly concise. It wasn't like we were doing a quarter of the city in a, in a planning process. So we were able to keep up with this, with this schedule. So therefore, we get through the, we received the public input, we have the meetings, staff gathers up and reading through, evaluating, analyzing all of the data and the input that had been collected. There were two proposals presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting. Alternative one is where the land use plan, as currently adopted in the Stillwater C3 comprehensive plan, remains the same. What that means for the property is, on the south side of 12th Avenue, along the Copper Creek Development Frontage, those parcels that are currently developing in office, the land use plan indicates that they will be commercial, those properties to be commercial. Everything east of that, within the study area, that the hospital is constructing on public, so the blue is public. You can see a little of the blue up here with the yellow line running through it. Those are actual parcels that are sitting underneath 12th Avenue. So it's already a city street. It's public. There is a piece here that is public. These two parcels, the red again indicates commercial. The pale yellow that you see primarily on the north side, 96, 97% on the north side of 12th Avenue, that is low-density residential to develop in. And then the one lot that, again, following this item on the agenda tonight for rezoning, the land use plan indicates it as park and open space. And it is currently, as you'll see in a moment, developed. So that was alternative one that was presented to the Planning Commission. If this alternative is chosen by the City Council, what that means is that there will be no changes to the future land use plan, that this, this will be what the council sees as the future use to go on these parcels, residential, public, some commercial, and then that park open space. In order to apply a different zoning that would be outside of those four land use categories, each individual parcel would need to come in and seek a map amendment or a rezoning request, just as the two are already doing that, that have triggered this. So that's alternative one. Alternative two is to, on the south side of 12th Avenue, to keep the land use plan as it is currently adopted, on the north side to overlay, apply two overlay districts. And I will get into those overlay districts in a little bit more detail just in a moment. The western portion of it in the pink, the pale pink on the screen, this is proposed as the neighborhood conservation overlay district. The eastern portion is the neighborhood mixed-use overlay district. What this would, would imply, if this alternative were chosen, would be the commercial and the public on the south side. And on the north side, only the uses that would be allowed in those respective overlay districts would be allowed to go in. And one of the stipulations that came out of the Planning Commission meeting was that individual properties in the mixed-use overlay would need to rezone to overlay district in order to establish those uses that are identified in that overlay district. The neighborhood conservation overlay district, one of the things that you saw in the data that was collected and that staff heard loud and clear is conservation of single-family residential uses and structures. However, if anything other than single-family is allowed within this area, make sure that there are design requirements for those developments to be more integrated into that residential look and feel of the existing neighborhood. In the neighborhood mixed-use overlay district, there is recognition that the area is changing. There is an allowance for neighborhood scale uses, and those are specifically outlined in the mixed-use overlay district text. And here again, the design requirements for any new development to be integrated into the residential look and the feel of the neighborhood. I know that's short and sweet. I wanted to give you a fairly brief overview of this. It was a, it was an exciting process for staff, because usually we're individual site-specific, overseeing the development, or we're community-wide master planning, whether it's transportation or stormwater, or just the land use master plan. We have not had an opportunity in a number of years to, to get down to smaller areas of the community, and certainly have not as fully engaged the public as we did. You can see in the data that there was a lot of public engagement. I will say this, and the group has heard me say it before, the, the citizens and owners and residents have heard me say it before. One of the greatest things, no matter what comes out of this planning process, one of the greatest things that I witnessed was neighbors who did not know each other now are talking and walking and calling and communicating and developing those relationships, because they're forming like-minded goals and objectives, and they're seeing that there are other people out there who may disagree with them, but can do so very politely and still have those good relationships, or that there are like-minded folks out there that they want to pick their brains and gather more information on. So as I said, if nothing else comes out of this, then we think the neighborhood is better off for having that depth. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and thanks to all of those who participated. It was wonderful to read all of that. Tell me about design requirements. I'll just go first. What, you said it, so now just give us an overview, in a nutshell.
Yes, overview, in a nutshell. Design requirements is going to be roof pitch, how steep or how flat the roof is. Many residential houses, about a 412 pitch. They're not flat, but they're not the excruciatingly steep roofs that you see. So that's part of design requirements. The materials that are used, wood, brick, stone, as opposed to metal siding, or flashing, or anything like that on the exterior of the building. The additional landscaping is part of the design requirements that was put in here. I'm trying to think off the top of my head, height of buildings is another one. Many of the properties in the area, one, maybe a tall one-story that looks kind of like a one and a half, so limiting to two stories. Size is also another design requirement that, that is in both of the overlay district proposals. The, there's some properties being built on the south side of 12th Avenue, and they range in size from 2,300 square feet or so up to almost 6,000 square feet. So the integration into the neighborhood, there's not a lot of 6,000-square-foot houses in this neighborhood, so having a size limitation that would complement. So those are just a couple of the design requirements that, that are proposed in both of the overlay districts.
Okay. How about fencing that would separate? Is there anything?
Yes. Fencing, we didn't, we did not put in what code currently requires between the zoning districts, but we did beef up, not necessarily fencing itself, but landscaping, the green treatment for front yard and to separate, to use as a screening device and a buffer. That is beefed up in here.
Okay. Counselors.
Paula, it was one of the design requirements, the driveway size?
The driveway widths.
Yes.
Yes.
And no parking off of the driveway. So no parking on, I mean, that's not a design, but I read something about no parking off the.
No, no parking on the streets. We heard that loud and clear. The neighborhood was very concerned about the ability to traverse the streets.
So no parking on either side?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, that is, that is one of the requests that, that is put in here. And yes, the driveway width requirements is more in line with the more narrow residential as opposed to a much wider commercial driveway width. Yes, that is another one.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a list. If you guys want me to go. So is the overlay for the residential conservation, whatever we're calling that overlay, is that more restrictive than the underlying RSS zoning?
Yes, it is.
And what are the big ways it's more?
Primarily the design requirements, limiting the size of the structures, the materials that are used, the additional landscaping.
Okay. So there, you know, I saw stuff in there about duplexes with a door facing the street and that sort of thing.
Yes.
Are those currently, is that all currently allowed in residential single RSS zoning?
RSS zoning allows conventional single-family. I'm looking for Tom to see if it. I'm looking for Tom to see if it does a duplex with an SUP, but it may just be mobile manufactured home is allowed in an RSS zoning, conventional, single-family, and townhouses, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly. So uses-wise, Tom is nodding yes. Uses-wise... Patty is nodding yes. Use-wise, duplexes would be an allowed use that is not currently allowed, but there would be the restriction of mobile and manufactured housing.
So if I owned a lot on, I'll let you guys talk.
I'm sorry, please.
So if I owned a lot on Stanley now, that's a single-family house, I could tear it down and build a duplex under this overlay, but I couldn't do that if under regular RSS zoning?
That is correct.
Why in a district where we're saying we're trying to protect the neighborhood, would we say we're going to now allow a duplex where we wouldn't have allowed it before?
One of the things we also heard was affordable housing. And sometimes the margin of increased cost for a duplex actually makes both units more affordable than just a single-family. Affordable housing is a large concern of this neighborhood. And here again, with the design requirements, with the roof pitch, the height, the square footage, the materials, it's still going to appear to be similar to a single-family house.
And one of the other concerns is owner-occupied housing, and duplexes are not generally owner-occupied.
They are not both sides. There are, that's one of the mechanisms for affordability is have the owner live in one half and rent out the other as an income in the other half of the property. So again, this is a proposal that is before you. If you are very uncomfortable with allowing something that is not currently allowed in this in particular zoning district, you're more than welcome to take a look at striking it.
Cool. I'm just trying to clarify the...
Certainly.
Okay, so my next question would be, north of the proposed mixed-use overlay is also single-family housing, but we've only proposed the neighborhood protection overlay to the west, but not along the north edge of this. And I just wonder if there was any discussion of or concern about also protecting that single-family housing to the north of the proposed district?
To the north of Eleventh Avenue? Okay. I have the map here, if Jasmine or Megan could...
Where the white label is.
Yes. We, here again, we chose the immediate area for a study area based on the request that had come before, through the planning commission and before the city council. We did not expand it. The timeline in that regard would have been expanded also in looking at that. However, I have talked to, even after the process was completed from staff's standpoint, and we were preparing information to send to the planning commission, and after the planning commission meeting, I have spoken to some owners, residents, and concerned citizens about, one, forming a neighborhood association amongst themselves, and how could they request an overlay district much larger than the area, portion of the study area that is part of this planning process? So it can be done, to answer your question. It can be done. It was not done as part of this planning process.
Thank you. I have a couple more.
I'm here all night.
Me too. The permitted uses within the mixed-use overlay district include things like food service, beverage service, recreational uses. I'm just, I guess my question is, how did you come up with that list? I think, you know, in previous discussions, there was discussion of sort of medical office. But this list is much broader than that, and they're by right uses, right? So my question, I guess, would be, how did that list come about, and why did we make it so expansive?
A lot of the input and there, when we began this process, I'll step back just a little bit. When we began this process, we saw a lot of no, don't, and a lot of yes, why not? And as we went through the process, there was more coming together of, you know what? A coffee shop might not be a bad thing so we don't have to get in our vehicle, drive across town, you know, for a cup of coffee if we want something other than what we make at home. So those conversations were being held. There was, as part of a planning, true planning process, you need a place to start. Throw the ideas out there. What would be considered neighborhood-scale development to serve this immediate vicinity as well as what's developing on the south side of Twelfth Avenue? Here again, you've got half an hour for lunch. Wouldn't a corner deli be great that you could just walk across the street to and not have to get in your vehicle and drive? So it was a place to start for some of the information that we heard coming out of the input, whether it be the emails or the surveys or the public meetings. That's the main reason it was expanded. Just for the sole purpose of, there is also, there's more vacant land in the mixed-use overlay-proposed area than there is in the conservation overlay area. The conservation overlay area is built out. It's single-family houses. And yes, there are single-family houses in the mixed-use overlay area, but there's also opportunity for development and redevelopment. And one of the things that I reminded the planning commission of, the mixed-use overlay area has a lot of floodplain on it, which is much more expensive to develop. Typically, you don't see a lot of single-family housing developing in the floodplain because of the cost to do so. That really doesn't have a lot to do with why the uses were expanded, but...
In a floodplain, can you build condos?
Yes, you can.
My last question at this point is, you mentioned that the change the planning commission made was that they would have to request to be rezoned into the overlay district?
Yes.
In the mixed-use one? What if they don't? Does it remain the underlying zoning?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so unless they come and get, well, I mean, how's that work? Is every one of those going to be treated the same way in terms of a zoning request? Like we are treating any?
The, what we staff gathered through part of the planning commission conversation was that they were not recommending the city council go ahead and overlay this area with that mixed-use overlay district. It would be available, similar to our neighborhood transition zone zoning district that we have on the codebooks now. It's an available zoning district for any neighborhood that fits the criteria. However, you as the council and planning commission did not recommend that you go out and rezone every neighborhood to that NTZ. This would function the same way. The overlay district would, if approved, be available, and that would be the only zoning that would be applied that anyone could come in and ask for within the bounds of that mixed-use overlay district. For instance, RSS property would not be allowed to come in and ask for a CG or an office. They would only be able to ask for the overlay district zoning to be applied. And therefore, the uses, the design requirements would be the restriction on the property.
I mean, I'm not aware that we can, by law, say you can never rezone this to anything else other than this one option.
I think that requires some research. Quite frankly, I'm having some problems with this concept as well.
So I guess my question is, if, say, the existing single-family residence is in that, in that zone, in that area that's crosshatched as a mixed-use, if they didn't want to rezone to the mixed-use commercial, and they wanted to tear down and build another house, a residential home there, they're still going to be allowed to do that?
Yes.
Right, so I mean, there is some concern about there still being this kind of conflicting use happening even within that area. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Are you sure?
For now.
Is it definitely conflicting use?
So to speak.
Mixed use, multi-use.
Anybody else? Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And we will stop-start with, that was a slip, with John Pollak. And please state your address.
I live at 1106 South Adams, which happens to be in the mixed-use overlay-proposed area. I'd like to start with a couple of disclaimers before I get going. One is, if I say I don't like to see something or I'm against something, that's nothing personal to anybody. Not a developer, not a neighbor, anybody else. It's just my opinion. The other thing is, I'm just a country boy. Moved to town a couple of years ago. I wanted to get back to my roots in Stillwater. My family goes back to about statehood time here. And I looked for three years to find a piece of property that suited me. And when I found something, I went down to City Hall and I sat down with zoning people and said, "Tell me what the zoning is. Tell me what the long-range plan is." Everything. Well, you know, it was all R1, or RSS, you call it, I think. And no mention was made of the hospital development because, of course, that drives things, you know, and that came along. I'm actually glad to hear that there's some confusion on your part about the rezoning because we have a lot of confusion, and that translates into fear. I live in that area by choice. There are friends and neighbors that live there by choice. They like the neighborhood for personal reasons. The process, and the city staff worked hard on it. We could tell they did. If it seemed fast to them, it seemed really fast to us because we weren't as familiar with a lot of this. And so we're gasping for breath half the time trying to figure out, you know, what are we deciding on? And one thing I'm going to nitpick on, met the first night, voted, drew on maps, made comments, all this stuff. They come back the second time, says, "Based on your comments and votes, pick among these three, you know, of these three scenarios, which would you be interested in?" One of it was, "Leave it alone." One of it was, "Let's plan on making everything on the north side of Twelfth Commercial." And the other one was, "What about looking into an overlay?" Well, if we knew what an overlay was, we probably thought of Westwood. So leave it alone, got the most votes. Overlay got the next most. Going commercial was the least. But the next time we met, there already was an overlay. And the mixed-use just kind of startled us. I really think that a lot of people that would have voted, "Yes, we're interested in looking at overlay," would not have voted that way had they seen the mixed-use. And we may be wrong, but to us, it looked like it was just going to open a floodgate. And part of it was, we weren't sure there was going to be a review or that it was just going to say, "From now on, you can just do this." So you can see our concern. And I agree with Paula. One of the good things came out of this is we've gotten to know each other. We've talked, we've shared ideas. We want to start a neighborhood association. We've met several times on our own, and good things have come out of it. More to come, we hope. I won't take any more time, but I would just like to say that, I guess our request right now is we would like to see it, the zoning stay the way it is. Now, if that's not in the cards, I think this plan has not matured yet. And I would like to see more back-and-forth input and time put into it before it is adopted. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Michael. Do you know who you are?
Yes, I'm Michael Oliver. I live at 1123 South Gray, which is right on the edge of Twelfth and Gray Street, adjacent to 12th Street and in the conservation overlay. To kind of echo some of what John said about our confusion, I did not know that we were able to build duplexes in the conservation area until a few minutes ago. So we are definitely not experts. We're not able to really digest and understand this information as quickly as somebody that could, that does it on a daily basis. I've been a resident of Stillwater since 2004 when I came here to go to school. Been a homeowner since 2010 and chose this area of Stillwater because it has easy access to both sides of town on Highway 51 or 177. And it was developed, older homes, single-family homes. We liked the feel of it. We liked the character of the older homes, and we liked that it was a neighborhood separated from businesses. We're concerned that the mixed-use overlay opens up a precedent for creeping business development in our neighborhood. It may not happen immediately, but further down the line, it could be, well, there's business here. Why not extend that to another portion of what is now the conservation area? Good things have come from this input. We have gone door-to-door. My wife and I have gone door-to-door in the study area, knocked on every single door, talked to neighbors, met them, continued to meet with some of them, and gotten to know our neighbors. So that has been a positive outcome of this. We would also like to see that zoning stays the same and allow us to really present our ideas of what we would like to see happen in the area. And as John alluded to, and I think Paul alluded to, that we would like to see a larger area covered than what has currently been addressed. I'd even invite any of you to come and spend an evening with my wife and I in the neighborhood, walking the dog, waving to neighbors that we see out in their yards during the evening. If you have any questions, I'd like to answer those. Otherwise, that's what I have to say.
Do you have an objection to commercial activity on the north side of 12th Street altogether? Or are you open to the idea of some? What are your thoughts on?
Yes, personally, I don't want to see commercial development north of 12th Street. We're fine with what's happening south of us. We live right across from a chiropractor and a dentist. That's fine. But to insert it into the middle of the existing neighborhood, I feel is not entirely appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the objection is more to the mixed-use, not to the conservation?
Up until a few minutes ago, yes. I just learned that the conservation will allow duplexes, which I'm not sure would be a good or a bad thing. I don't know how I feel about it since I just understood that. I didn't understand that previously.
The stuff is all confusing.
It is. Yeah, it's taken us some time to understand.
A lot of acronyms and all kinds of things.
Any other questions?
Thank you. I really need to start writing phonetically. Jerry?
As you know, I live at 910 South Stanley, and I love my neighborhood. I've lived there for thirty years. I simply want to emphasize again what my fellow residents have said, John Pollak and Michael Oliver, is that we would like this area to remain residential. I think we expressed that, actually, during the planning meetings. I'm not sure that there was that agreement or that... What do I, I'm trying to think of how to put this. I'm not sure that there was that agreement that we would at least entertain the idea of a mixed-use overlay. Certainly, there is the idea that we would, that we're open to discussion and we're open to such discourse. I might say that, as I've said before, I walk and jog the area between Western and Duck, between Ninth and Twelfth. And I have spoken with... Duck, between Ninth and 12th, and I have spoken with people from all parts, from that mixed-use overlay area, by the way, all the way over to Western. And I would say universally, the people I have spoken with are for leaving the, the comprehensive plan as-is, and allowing more time for discussion. As you know, community involvement takes time and perseverance, it's not something you can do on a schedule. And I think we need more time and more consideration to really build a strong and vibrant community, which is your desire as well, and we want to be part of that initiative. So, I don't know if you have questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley Weeks.
Good evening, Shirley Weeks, 71 University Circle. I want to thank the council for starting us on the journey of the 12th Avenue study. As you recognized this area as a viable, affordable neighborhood, all of us appreciate that. The 12th Avenue land use study was too short, the area was too small, and the land use options were limited as presented at the meetings. The first meeting established the most vote was to leave the area with current zoning. Focus of study were, but the focus of the study were as overlays, rather than looking at options, or how we could use codes for the improvement of the environment of the residential area that we'd all requested. The citizens of this area have defined the vision for the neighborhood. As you've heard them speak tonight about how much they love their neighborhood, how they like the viability of all kinds of people living there, owner-occupied renters, they like that about the neighborhood. I'm grateful to be able to participate and watch these special people explore, gain knowledge, discuss, agree on best options to preserve the neighborhood for its most desirable future. I urge you to follow the leadership of the 12th Avenue citizens and leave current zoning in place, no mixed-use overlay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah Meinke.
Good evening, and it's good to be here again. Deborah Meinke, I live at 1023 South Kings, so it's a little ways west of the current area that we're, we're speaking about, but I don't really have a whole lot to add, except to just echo some of what's been, been said. I did learn some new things tonight, I've been trying to juggle this multi-use concept. It does seem to be too broad, as it's currently described, and I'm not sure if this is a question can be answered, I'm not sure if I'm understanding correctly that if this were chosen, then any, the individual pieces of property would not be brought before the council if there were rezoning? Is that how that works? Or?
It would be.
It would all be?
It would be brought.
It would be brought, okay, then I was confused about that, I appreciate having that cleared up. But I, I still am pretty convinced that I would prefer not to have commercial on that north side of 12th Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of the requests for 7E. Okay, okay, so Paula?
Close the hearing.
First, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, council.
The Planning Commission is sending a recommendation to approve an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and to approve a text amendment establishing the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District and the Neighborhood Mixed Use Overlay District, as they had amended at their meeting. And this is a 6-0 vote that comes to you from the Planning Commission. And their minutes are included in your packet as well, so you could see the discussions that, that were held there.
Again, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Councilors.
Who's going first?
You can go.
I want to thank Paula and the staff for the work that's gone into the, the planning process here, I think this was great. You know, I think a few folks that spoke said, you know, it was too short, or it was too small an area, and that sort of thing, and I, you know, that may or may not be true, but this process was a much more involved and, you know, inclusive process than we've generally had over these, these issues in the recent past, and I think that's a good thing. I loved hearing about the community coming together to have the discussions, you know, whether, whichever way it goes, so I think it's great, I, I hope this is something that we do more and more of when it comes to these discussions, because neighborhood issues should be discussed at a neighborhood level, and not just on a parcel level. I like the idea of this mixed-use overlay, I've gone back and forth over this a lot, I really, I really like the idea of the mixed-use overlay for a couple reasons. You know, it does bring businesses to the area that the area will use, I don't doubt at all that if there was a coffee shop at 12th and Washington, people would go to it, if there was a pharmacy at, you know, Gray and Washington, or Gray and 12th, or whatever it is, that people would use it. I, so, I, I go back and forth with it, I, I like the idea, but I think what's proposed here is too broad, I think it's too many possible uses, I think it's too big of an area, I don't think it needs to go from 12th to 11th. And I, I have concerns about the conservation, the overlay being, being more, allowing more, the duplexes especially, or townhomes to be built in the single-family residential, if they're not allowed in the current zoning, I, I don't think we should expand that if we're trying to conserve the neighborhood. I, I think it should be bigger, I don't want to put a mixed commercial overlay in an area that is bounded by single-family and not have it stretched to all those areas. So, I, I love the process, I like the general idea of where we are, I don't know, you know, I guess if we have to vote on one or the other at this point, I would say keep the zoning, because, keep the current zoning, because I, I think this is just too, too broad for what we, what the neighbors want to see in the area. And, so I, I don't know if this is appropriate at all, but I, I think it is important to specifically address something that was said in the Planning Commission meeting by one of the Planning Commissioners, which had the flavor of, "We need bigger, more expensive lots here to, to keep the neighborhood from, from being taken by undesirables," I think was the quote. I think that is absolutely, the not, not the idea that we should be using when it talks about zoning. I think that's a, not the way we should be looking at this at all. And, and this is a neighborhood of people who love where they live, and, you know, we need to, we need to make sure we're trying to figure out how to solve that and keep it, and not how to drive people out and replace them with other people that, that have some different characteristics, so, yeah, I, I, I would, I'm against the, the recommendation at this point.
Thank you.
I kind of agree with Will, I, I like, I do like the mixed use, I would love for something walkable near my neighborhood, and it does seem to have too much, too, too many options, and I would like for the neighbors to have a more chance to understand it completely, and to have more input into what types of projects they would, would actually like to see. Of course, you know, I mean, it's all driven by demand and need and all kinds of economic things that we don't have any control over sometimes, but I would like, you know, I've been on council now almost four years, and I am just beginning to understand these acronyms and terms and zones, and so I do recognize how difficult it is to wrap your head around these things in what seems like a long time to someone who does it all the time. I also would like to see the conservation district much bigger. That I, my office is over on Athan Pine, I love that neighborhood, I love walking around at lunch, it's, it's a great neighborhood, and I would like to see much more area protected. And I, I don't have the objection, I, I don't think, to duplexes or condos if they are, if there's a strict adherence to the design review. But that would be another thing for the neighbors to really wrap their head around. I do absolutely like the idea that this, you know, sometimes tragedies and earthquakes and tornadoes bring neighborhoods together, and luckily, we didn't have to have one of those, but we did have kind of a controversy, so it brought people out of their homes and meeting each other, and gives people a focus and a desire to create that identity that we are looking for as a council. So, I think I would agree, give the neighbors more time to really work this out themselves, I, I don't know if, I mean, I'm kind of a, like a, give people more time, how much time? So, I don't know if that's necessary, but that would be my thought.
Thank you. Councilors and aunties?
Yeah, I don't have much more to add from what Councilor Joyce and Vice Mayor Darlington talked about, too, I'm, I'm the same way, I think the mixed use, I don't have, it's broad, and my concerns are about that. And I'm kind of like Vice Mayor Darlington, you know, I think, what time do we look at? There's, there's not, how do you, how do you define that? But I do think that, I'm getting on the council now two years, and I am just, I still have my cheat sheet for zoning, trying to figure all that out. And so, I, I also want to comment, too, that I think the reality is that, that 12th Street corridor is changing. And I think we still need to recognize that and pay attention to that, and as much as we want to preserve what that neighborhood represents, and I think that's very important, and I'm listening to the residents, I also want to be mindful of what could be, and I think that's where the mixed use could come in, and, and be a part of that and make a difference, and so I certainly.
Thank you.
Well, first I'd like to say I'd like a copy of Councilor Zanotti's cheat sheet. I've been on the council for four months now, and, and still struggling with some of these terms myself. I will say to kind of echo Councilor Zanotti's comments, that 12th Street is, is a developing place. With a municipality the size of Stillwater, a four-lane street or artery is something that becomes very desirable to, to business and development, and I think that shooing that away ultimately will be a mistake. Does that mean that we should give development carte blanche to do whatever they want? No, no, it does not. And that's where this process is very important. And I appreciate all the input that's gone into this, on staff's part, on part of the residents, and the people that reside in this area, because ultimately, that's what we, as a council, use to base our decisions on and to make our policy, is what the input from the, from the citizens, and in this case, the residents of the area have to say. And without that input, it makes our job very difficult. And so, ultimately, I think that the mixed-use overlay is a good idea, I think it's an excellent start, and I think it's, it's a move in the right direction. If we need to have further discussion on what that mixed-use overlay needs to entail or needs to include, if we need to narrow down that scope, I'm definitely in for more discussion on that. Ultimately, I think that, that further commercial development of this area is something that, that needs to be looked at very closely, and I think it can be done in a way that benefits not only the residents, but the citizens of Stillwater as a whole. So I am for development of this area, with the caveat that further discussion in a middle ground needs to be reached with the people that reside in this area. And so if we need to, based on the input from the citizens and the, and the residents around this area, discuss this further, then I'm, I'm all for that. We need to get to a middle ground, and we need to figure out what we're going to do with this area that benefits everybody. So, with that, I will say that, that, that I think we're headed in the right direction here with this, with this plan. If we need to tweak it here and there, and narrow, narrow down our scope of the mixed-use overlay, then, then game on, so.
Thank you. And I will just end this by saying, first of all, thanks to the staff, big thanks to everybody who participated, and you made your, your neighborhood stronger, which is something we're very hopeful that all, all neighborhoods will listen, will look at what you've done, and, and become stronger neighbors and people who know each other. So one of the most important things, I think, in our lives, besides our family, is where we live. And neighborhoods, I feel, deserve to be protected. And I understand that it's a lot to take in, because I sat in a similar situation where it was hard to understand all of the acronyms and what can go where, and I think the staff does a wonderful job of explaining everything, but sometimes people have to hear it several times before it really, it clicks, which is what several of you said tonight about not knowing about the condos, or, so I agree, the mixed use is too broad. Protection of neighborhoods and of good places to live in Stillwater where there's a, a strong neighborhood is, is very important to me. I will reiterate what everybody else said by just saying that, and saying that I, I really lean towards keeping it the same, but there needs to be more discussion. The neighbors need to get back together, and I, I like what you said, Vice Mayor, about, I want them to figure it out, I would like for them to choose what they want to do. Development is important to Stillwater, and I know that that area is desirable to businesses, but it's desirable to people who want to live there, too. So with that, is Vice Mayor, yes?
Can I make just a couple of philosophical?
Absolutely.
Comments? I did like the Speaker's comment about what is unknown creates fear, and I think that when, when the people who live in this area have a chance to understand the terms, really look at maps, understand all the ins and outs, the fear will, will dispel. And I also, Counselor Wedlake mentioned carte blanche, no one should have carte blanche, this is not us versus them, we are all, we are all citizens, some of us happen to have jobs that build stores and buildings, and some of us have other kinds of jobs, we're all citizens, no one has, it's not us versus them. And when we can get over our fear of each other and of unknown, we will be able to create even a, a better neighborhood than by ourselves we could have imagined. And it will take a little bit more time, but I really like time, timeframes, too. How long did it take Westwood to do their overlay process?
Year, 14 months, 12, 14 months.
And we've been working on this since January?
It was, it was directed... It was, it was directed, it was directed by council to conduct this planning process towards the end of January. Yes, it really got started and going late February, early March.
So it, we, Westwood kind of paved the road though, so we wouldn't have to maybe take 12 to 14 months if the neighborhood really was organized.
Well, and we're all saying that we're, the mixed use is what we're okay with, is just narrowing that down a little bit. So to me, it's not, yeah, to me, it's narrowing that down.
Yeah, and I don't know what the next step, if we table this and say, ask staff to come back with a more narrow, you know, go through an extended process and come back with a more narrow proposal, or do we have to?
You could remand it back to the Planning Commission with instructions to narrow the number of uses in the multi-use area and to expand the geographical area of the residential uses.
How would that help?
Yeah, I want them to talk first, so I want.
Well, I just want them to be, know what's available.
I mean, well, I'm just saying if you send it back to the Planning Commission, then it's back down there and then if they want, then staff can go ahead and do what they want to do. Or you can just skip the Planning Commission completely and tell staff, this is what we want you to work on and bring it back.
Well, I think we have the Planning Commission's recommendation. I mean, we have that framework now, right? I mean, as far as the conservation overlay and the mixed use overlay, now it's, now it's coming to an agreement on what a mixed use overlay means. So I mean, do we even, do we even need?
No, I mean, you've been through the Planning Commission at this point. I mean, it's usually if you are not going to accept a recommendation from a board, it's customary to send it back if you think that there's some things that you would like them to work on, but if you don't want the Planning Commission to work on it, would rather have staff tweak the recommendation that they've made, then you certainly don't have to send it back through that step in the process.
From what I've heard tonight, that the area's too broad, there's too many uses, and I might suggest that if council desires, that staff could get back together with the neighborhood and talk about narrowing not only the area, but the uses.
I like the idea of staff getting back with the citizens.
I agree.
I agree. If I may remind you, we still have two active rezoning requests in the area. Just don't want to let those be forgotten as we're going through this process.
One of them is up after this, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't, I guess I don't have a real strong opinion about whether we, I mean, if we remand it to the Planning Commission, we can remand it with instructions to have staff narrow the plan some through consultation with the neighborhood. And that's our expectation. And then it goes back to the Planning Commission after that. I mean, I do value the Planning Commission's input in the process and so, you know, it does make some sense, given that that's the normal way that this happens, that if we're going to send it back down, that it goes back through the Planning Commission as well. But I do, you know, I would think our remand instructions would need to be that we expect staff's going to work with the neighborhood more and come back with a narrower plan. I don't know if we can include that many.
I think, I think you want to make your desires known to staff when they take the thing back, because not knowing what direction you think this needs to go is going to be detrimental to the process.
So I will make a motion to remand the issue to the Planning Commission with the instructions to have staff work again with the neighborhood to come back with a more narrow area and definition of what's available, what's allowed in the mixed use, this is a long motion, I'm sorry, what's allowed in the mixed use area and to expand the conservation district to cover a larger area.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for staff to work with the neighborhood and go back to the Planning Commission. Is that, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the motion is approved.
Mayor, if I may, one, just general guidance. Absent the next item on the agenda, there is still an outstanding zoning request. And I think the city attorney and I may need to visit about revisiting that issue fairly quickly.
You can't let those set forever. I mean, I know that we are in the process of trying to examine that area within the context of, you know, future uses, but they are entitled to some type of a decision, even if it's a negative one, so.
Okay.
The, I mean, the point of tabling that initially was to not have them end up with a year of moratorium, you know? And so, I mean, I would prefer to keep it tabled as long as we can, so we're not cutting them off.
That's true.
But I would, I mean, I would say that it would seem unlikely to me that it would pass at this point, given the discussion we've had.
It seems kind of.
How about I'll visit with the owner and see what he thinks about the item remaining tabled, whether he wants an immediate or wants a hearing, speedy hearing on the issue.
You're asking, I mean, it's the next item on the agenda.
No.
No.
This is a different one.
Oh, this is a different one?
Right, it's a different one.
Okay, never mind.
It's not on the agenda for tonight, so we can't really.
Right.
Okay, that moves us to item F. Am I correct? Yes, okay. Received public comment regarding a request for a map amendment for property at 823 West 11th Avenue from RSS Residential Small Lot, Single Family District to the O Office District, continued from our March 6th meeting. This is CC-17-73. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes.
Mr. McNichol?
And Ms. Dinsen has the final public hearing report.
Map amendment for the property that is located at the southeast corner of Washington and 11th. It is surrounded on the south, west, east and north by city-owned parkland that is developed in outdoor recreational facilities. On the west side across Washington Street is Zoned Office and it is a parking lot on the northern piece and is currently vacant on the south piece. So this request is to go from the island of residential small lot, single family, as you can see the yellow, to office zoning, which is adjacent across the street. Here's a street view of the property. This is the piece in the 12th Avenue planning process that was the only lot sticking on the east side of Washington. This is the developed view of the property. Comparison of, between RSS and Office, again, this is in your packet, I know it's difficult to see on the screen, but the purpose for this request is food service. There has historically been a food service enterprise being conducted on the property, mainly place your order, come pick it up and leave with it. That would like to be expanded and the owner is here this evening in case you have any questions of him. As you can see, going from RSS to Office, it does take it from very restrictive residential only to the first blush that you have of a commercial zoning district, which is the Office. So there are many uses that are not complementary or shared between the two. Food service, however, even though it is an allowed use in the Office District, it is only allowed with a specific use permit, which has also been applied for. The purpose of the rezoning was to get it into place because an SUP could not be approved until that zoning is in place. So that's the phase one of the questions that are before the council. And again, the bulk standards, the Office District has similar setbacks, they're a little more on the side. A lot of this will not necessarily apply because of the city's parkland that is surrounding it. Height is one of the greatest differences and also there's no minimum lot size in the Office zoning. However, there is a lot coverage percentage, so you can't build over the entire property like you can in some of the other commercial zoning districts. Be happy to answer any questions or pop the map back up if you want to take a look at it.
Can you pop the map back?
Certainly.
Is that, what is that section just north? Is it the middle of the street?
Yes, it is street. We do not have zoning layer on the maps that whites out all of the streets or the map would just look pretty much white because of how many streets and transportation system we have. So zoning districts go, if they're divided around, they go to, we try and take them just to the center of the street.
Okay. So, but that's not a separate parcel there that will?
No, it is not. It is, it's the public right of way. As you can see, the gray lines on the north and south, those are actual properties, so all of this in between is the public right of way. If this is chosen to be rezoned to Office, then all of it would convert to the purple.
Thank you.
Or whatever color we have at the time.
More questions? Any questions? Okay, at this time I will open the public hearing and our first speaker is Julie Couch.
I'm Julie Couch, 901 South Gray. What Paula said about getting to know the neighborhood during all this process, we did get to know the neighborhood, including Mr. Douglas. And I'm certainly not opposed to Mr. Douglas having his barbecue on the patio by his house. What I, what concerns me, and I also want to thank Paula, I asked her I don't know how many questions today on email about this issue, and she was answering them at 4:30, I think. So that was pretty good and I appreciate that. But I'm concerned about what would happen if Mr. Douglas ends his business or if he sells his property and it goes to Office. And then we would have another issue. And I just think there ought to be a better way to deal with this situation. I don't know what it is, but I just want to say there ought to be a better way for him to have his restaurant and then get back to, really, it looks like it ought to be parkland or public land. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. That was our only speaker for this? No?
My name is Bobby Douglas and I live at 823 West 11th Street. There's two pieces of property there. It's a house that I live on and it's a building next door. I came here in 1975 to play football for Oklahoma State University. And anybody that's been here, and I'm glad to see some of the neighborhood here, it's been a barbecue place for over 70 years. And so when I bought the property, my wife, matter of fact, the people that owned the property was my wife's cousin. So when I came in '89 to buy the property, it was the intent of reopening the barbecue place. Matter of fact, I had a variance from John Wesley, I don't know if y'all remember John Wesley, but I got a variance from John Wesley in 1990 to open up the barbecue place. But the deal was, is that at that point in time, I was laid off from my job in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And so I'd done 36 years driving that highway to Tulsa, Oklahoma, back and forth, and the Lord allowed me to retire. So I was thinking in my mind, with the, with the area, that if I would take down that building and put a 30 by 30 patio there, it'll be outside Eden, it would be conducive to the atmosphere of the park. So, you know, that's, that's my intent. I didn't know nothing about this, this overlay when I, when I filed. And so actually, I don't think I should be in the overlay because my neighborhood, I am the neighborhood. There's no neighbors on the left for three or four blocks, there's no neighbors on the right for three or four blocks. And I spoke with the committee, the neighbors, because I went to every meeting, and I think if you will ask them, they will tell you that I don't need to be in this overlay. And so that's just what I'm here to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public meeting and Ms. Dinsen?
The Planning Commission is sending a recommendation to approve the map amendment request from RSS to Office on a five to zero vote.
I have a question. If, if we did do it Office, can it revert back if it was sold?
It would have to be another rezoning request to go back. That would be considered conditional zoning and we do not, are not allowed to do conditional zoning, other than like a PUD, that's where items are negotiated, but they're already identified in the planned unit development. So this would not have a reversionary clause on it. As I responded to Ms. Couch's questions, and Julie, there were about 30 of them. One of the, one of the things is with the specific use permit, again, this is at two levels, the rezoning and then the permission to establish that use. If the use is discontinued or the conditions of the use are not consistently carried through, then the SUP or the specific use permit becomes invalid. The rezoning would still be in place though, and that would be up to Mr. Douglas or any subsequent property owners to come and seek a map amendment to change it back to public if the, for public purposes, any other commercial or back to the RSS zoning district.
And is there not a, is there not a zoning designation that closer fits? There's not a hospitality zoning, there's not a food service zoning? Office is as close as you can get to this?
Yes, it is. Yeah, it is. There are some very intense multifamily zoning districts that can allow food service, but Office uses are much more narrow than those multifamily where you could have 50 or 60 apartment complexes, you know, units out on a piece of property.
Okay, I will, I don't think I closed, did I close the public hearing? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Yeah, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. With a vote of five to zero, it is approved. That takes us to general orders. Water pressure standards, CC-17-85. Mr. McNichol?
Well, I'm going to tell you that staff could not come to a consensus on what council decided on April 17th. And we have some items that are holding. And so as a result, Bill Millis, we're going to tag team you tonight, we put this on the agenda Friday. Bill Millis is going to talk about how the 40-pound PSI came to be. And then Paula is going to explain a little bit about what questions staff has. The attorney, John Dorman, and I agreed, it's, it was amazing. And some of the rest of the staff, I'm kidding, some of the rest of the staff had different opinions. So, and after watching the tape several times, frankly, we couldn't decide. So I'll let them give their report.
Thanks, Mr. McNichol. Bill Millis, Water Resources Director, I'll give you the brief background on the 40 PSI requirement and then turn it over to Paula. The city's design and construction standards, as well as the rural water terms and conditions, require 40 PSI as a minimum, but that's only for waterline extensions. Both city code, the design and construction standards and the terms and conditions are silent for connections without infrastructure improvements. silent for connections without infrastructure improvements, i.e. if there was an existing waterline and all you wanted to do is connect to it. So in those scenarios, the DEQ minimum is what applies, and that's 25 PSI. So you've got two different bars depending on the kind of development or waterline connection that's going on. And regarding the, whatever the minimum pressure is, even if you were to say the DEQ minimum was fine and all we need, there's, there, there's a need for some buffer from that minimum. For one, that, that is, that's, the minimums are at the main, where the point of service is or the meter. And so the customer plumbing, there's going to be some loss of pressure, especially as a home ages. So in some cases, when there's pressure issues, it's because there's a problem on the, on the customer side in their plumbing. The other issue there can be that future growth and development will erode the pressure that you have. So even in the southwest zone, this is what we saw. Areas of the southwest zone 30, 40 years ago had adequate pressure, but as the area developed, that, that pressure was decreased over the years. So what's, what is the ideal pressure is, is somewhat subjective, but generally 60 to 80 PSI is the ideal range. But you can't just zero in on that range because there's, considering topography, you need to balance higher and lower pressures. There are downsides to having too high a pressure. So we can't just say between 60 and 80 and keep it that narrow. So how did we come up with 40? That was our effort to balance primarily providing the service that we know from experience that our customers expect, but also avoiding a significant curtailment of, of development possibilities and recognizing also that our system doesn't, does not have 40 PSI everywhere. So trying to balance all those is how we came up in 2013 with 40 PSI as the, the minimum pressure for new waterlines and recognizing that there were a lot of, was a lot of existing infrastructure that did not currently meet 40 PSI. That's why for the connections to existing lines, 25 PSI is the, is the prevailing regulation. So I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. Otherwise I'll turn it over to Paula to talk about clarifications regarding how to apply the, the direction we got in April.
I've had, had some serious jet lag, so I've been up since 1 o'clock this morning reading the American Society of Mechanical Engineer.
Oh my.
You should sleep well tonight.
I could put my head down right here.
I think that would cause jet lag if you didn't already have it.
And, and I didn't, especially talking about irrigated residents, you know, 60 to 80, exactly as you said, was the recommendation. And, you know, I just can't even tell you how frustrating it was to have a spring, you know, put, you know, $6,000 of sprinkler system in and have the water go about this far. It's, it has to be, it has to be 40. I mean, I understand why it's not 60, but 40 is great.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. So after the April 17th meeting, staff got together to understand the direction that council had provided us. And we started debating amongst ourselves and then it expanded to city attorney and city manager for part of the debate. And like Mr. McNichol indicated, all of us don't agree, so we're coming back to y'all. So you can help us clarify how to apply the minimum 40 PSI expectation that, that we heard from the council. And I'll give you some examples. The largest, the southwest zone. Currently, the city is working to remedy the water pressure issues in the southwest zone. So our question to the council, should that be the reason for an exception to allow either new lots to be created in the southwest zone or new service connections, which is the placement of a water meter on an existing lot in the southwest zone? Those are one area, but two totally different questions. The rationale behind making an exception for that, for just that southwest zone area is the city has the funding mechanism. The city is the developer in charge of making sure that those improvements are made. Yes, it's a long term, but the city is diligently working towards that. It's on our horizon, it's past the drawing board. There's, as you know better than anyone, there's work already occurring on that. So that would be question number one, do we make an exception for the southwest zone? If we do, is that exception for the creation of new lots, meaning someone could come in with a subdivision plat and it be approved, hoping that once the infrastructure is in place, that 40 PSI will be achieved? If they cannot achieve it where they currently are? And then two, on existing lots, are we authorized to provide a water meter or a service connection when they do not meet the 40 PSI? Again, in the anticipation that because of the work the city is doing, they will. That's the first obstacle.
And assuming that it does not.
The first debate that we had.
Yeah, and assuming that it does not adversely impact, impact anyone else. In other words, in other words, it does not lower someone else's water pressure.
And how do you know that?
We have engineers that can figure that out.
We have a computer model, a model of the water system and a proposed new development would include what their proposed demand is, you know, the times during the day and seasonal irrigation, fire and domestic demands, and we plug that into the model and evaluate impacts.
So the question is if, because Water 2040 is, it's only 2017, we don't, it's not done. When it's done, it will provide 40 PSI. I mean, if nothing changed, if nobody built anything new or did anything different between now and the time it was done, it is projected to produce 40 PSI.
It was designed to provide pressure between 40 and 120 PSI, but it also includes projected growth through the year 2040. So it's not just designed to fix where we are now, but to allow for future development. That doesn't mean that, you know, some really intensive development couldn't come in and not be allowed, but we're doing as reasonably as we can, projecting what the future growth will be, we can accommodate that once 2040 is complete.
And, and the question is, it's not done yet, can somebody build, design a subdivision and build it because they're not going to have 40 PSI? But it's going to be there in 13 years? 23?
At the end of 2018.
Oh, so just a year and a half?
Package A and package B will be complete in January of 2019. Package C was deferred until at least 2020 because in the planning horizon, it's far enough out that we know we won't need it before then, so we'll wait till then and then reevaluate. So, yeah, January of 2019.
How much more growth can we accommodate? You're saying if we bring in new growth, it, once it's fixed, it's okay. Are, are we certain that we're not going to have another southwest problem? Or any problem, but mainly southwest because that's what we're dealing with now?
Well, the southwest, the Water 2040 focuses on the southwest pressure zone and areas that are tied to it and areas that, between the plant and the zone, that we had to improve to get, to meet the demands and the pressure in the southwest zone. That's all, it's based on projections of population growth of where's going to be commercial, where's going to be residential. So it's, you know, it's as good as we can look in our crystal balls and see.
So you've had the 40 PSI since 2013?
Yes, ma'am.
And homes have been built in the southwest without meeting that criteria?
Homes connecting to existing waterlines.
Only had to meet 25?
Only had to meet 25.
Okay.
Developments that were going to extend infrastructure since that date have had to meet the 40 PSI requirement. That in Primrose. That was one where they had to find a way to meet, you know, they had to make an offsite improvement to the existing system so that they could meet the standards. But yes, so new infrastructure since 2013 in the southwest zone has had to meet 40 PSI, but connections to existing lines have not.
Which is your, the rule everywhere?
Correct. That, that's the standards in the city. In the southwest zone is where, is where we know we have issues, so it's where it's more of an impact.
Can I just ask a question? I'm a little lost. Since 2013, we've had this requirement that you can't build a new line unless it meets 40 PSI, right? You can't add on a water main, or I don't know the terminology here.
Yes, sir.
The problem we had last meeting or two meetings ago, whenever this came up, was that we were looking at a subdivision that wasn't adding an additional water line. They were connecting to an existing one, but those lots weren't going to be at 40. And we said, well, if we're requiring new lines to have 40, why aren't we also requiring connections to existing lines to have 40? And now you're wondering, okay, now all this other stuff comes into play because you're telling we can't create any lot that doesn't have 40, even if it's an existing connection.
And there was, there was some interpretation amongst staff, and I'm speaking for all of staff, in our debate cycle that we had, there was some interpretation amongst staff that the council's expectation was no service connections if it did not meet 40.
Even on an existing lot?
Even on an existing lot.
Something that's already been subdivided out and?
Yes.
Somebody's owned the lot for five years, they're just now building a house and they got to put up a water meter, it's not 40, so you can't get your water meter.
So you cannot get a building permit, correct?
That seems like a problem.
That same, yeah.
Therefore, the reason we're back before you this evening.
Can you explain why there's a distinction made between adding water, new water mains and adding a kind of service connection to an existing water main? Wouldn't adding, I guess my question is based on, wouldn't adding 20 connections to an existing line potentially decrease pressure down the line? Or no?
It has the potential to, it depends on, on what the development is and where it is. It's not a yes or no, but it, but there is that potential.
So why was the, the 40 PSI standard only placed on new, new construction mains instead of existing waterlines in the first place?
Probably the strongest reason would, would have been the perception that if there's a water line there and a person had property adjacent to that water line, that they could develop it. Kind of, kind of the same question as what you're facing now is that, that without the two different thresholds, or that there's a lot more impact on development if you use that 40 PSI threshold for both situations.
Yeah, because you're kind of coming into a situation where somebody said, well, there was already a water main here, I expected I could, I could, I could build because the, the infrastructure was already there, as opposed to somebody who knew they were going to have to build infrastructure to get to this land they're trying to build on.
Correct. But whatever, whatever the development is, it's not allowed to decrease the water pressure there or other locations below the state minimum.
Below the 25?
Right.
We actually have a pending minor subdivision that was a large lot that they want to split into three. And that creates new lots. So it was staff's position that, from the April 17th meeting, that that would not be allowed because the water main at that location did not meet 40 pounds.
If you split it into three lots, it's just one lot. I'm assuming you mean there are more humans on that lot now with three?
There would be, well, there would be two more meters as well.
Okay.
So these are real life questions that we're asking, they aren't hypothetical.
Well, I think we've answered the council's original question is as to why there was this double standard, right? I mean, the, the initial question was, is why 40 in this instance and why 25 in this instance, right? There you go.
Well, and state law says it's okay if it's 25.
Right.
So, and when the?
You know, we are policy people. I mean, I don't know anything about PSI or 25 or 40, except what I read last, this morning. But, you know, I just want you to follow, people to follow what you have laid out as the rules. And if you think the rules are 40 and 25, make them 40 and 25. If you think the rules should be 40, I mean, I don't make the rules. I just say, follow the policy. The policy is follow the rules that you experts make.
We, we gave them policy last meeting that they shouldn't connect if it wasn't going to meet 40.
Because that was the standard.
But it wasn't the standard for that specific type of connection. That's the problem. We took what was the existing standard for new waterlines and expanded it to, to, to just service connections to an existing waterline. So we made the policy broader, which now broad, brings in a bunch of other issues that we're not.
Yeah. If I may explain further, the, the minor subdivision that we were talking about prior to the meeting of the 17th would have been perfectly acceptable and we would have hooked them up with three separate meters.
And at the, at the last meeting, I mean, the discussion was, if we're going to say 40, we should say 40, right? And if you're creating more lots, it should be 40. And I don't have any problem with that policy. I mean, I think that there's, it becomes more difficult for me if we're talking about an existing lot, right? If we're saying somebody's already got a lot that's, that's close to a water line and all they're going to do is connect to it, I don't think that should, you know, that was already there, it was created.
We're preventing them.
If we're talking about subdividing new lots out and creating new lots that nobody's, you know, already planned to build on, then it makes more sense to say, no, that, that needs to be 42. So I would, I mean, it makes sense to me if we're talking about creating a new lot that did not previously exist, it needs to be 40. Is that enough? Would that clarify staff's?
Take care of it, yeah.
Concerns?
And issue service connections for existing lots?
Issue service connections for existing lots, but not create any new lots that would fall below 40.
What is an existing lot? Give me the definition.
That is a legal lot of record that is a platted lot filed on a subdivision plat or there is a deed by meets and bounds description.
Preliminaries or finals? Preliminaries, would it not?
No, it would not. A preliminary plat is not, you cannot convey any property off of that preliminary plat. It's just a final plat.
Okay.
That is filed of record.
Do we have a bunch of preliminary plats out there that were platted knowing that they were going to have to meet 40 or that they weren't going to have to meet 40?
We do have some preliminary plats that are not fully developed out, filed out. Honestly, we have not taken a look at each and every one of those to see what the pressures are for the reason, main reason that when a final is filed off of that preliminary plat, those improvement plans on that final have to meet the standards in effect at the time. The finals that have been filed recently are having to meet that 40 PSI that Bill was talking about.
On, for new, for new waterlines?
Yes, yes.
Are there preliminary plats out there that are planning to use existing waterlines and would only have to meet the 25 under the current?
Only for the existing lot. Only for the existing lot, you cannot create, well, under what I heard, no new lots. A preliminary plat does not create lots.
But putting that aside, I mean, if there's somebody out there who's already filed a preliminary plat expecting that their lots would only have to hit the 25 because they're not adding water line, don't really want to come in the middle of the process and change the standard on them after the fact. Now, what you just said was, when you file a preliminary plat, you know that your, that the standards might change between your preliminary plat and your final plat. And so if that's the case, knowing that the standards can change over time and whatever's in effect when you file final, maybe I'm a little better, you know, it makes a little more sense to me. I don't like the idea of changing, having, making somebody change their plans.
Not midway through, no.
You know, once they've already started.
It's not fair.
So to modify that...
How many of those? When you said a few, how many?
We have eight or 10 preliminaries that have not been completely finalized out. A lot of those are current and under final. Y'all have had the canyons, different sections come before you. Of course, North Tower Park is one. I deal homes with Trade and Heights, south of the new Walmart is another one, that those are active, ongoing, finals are coming in to be filed off of the preliminary. I will say this, Planning Commission is having some discussions on plating anyway. If y'all have had a chance to look at those agendas that are distributed out to you because of some issues that have arisen with the time that a preliminary plat is valid for, so that's part of the discussion, as well as vesting. We have not fully gotten into the vesting conversation yet. City Attorney's Office is working with us on that, but how far into a plating process does the developer become vested under what rules are applying at the time and can they continue on under those old rules, possibly subject to change? So those are conversations that we're having at the Planning Commission. We do not have it resolved at this time and will not tomorrow night. Hopefully in June, we will.
I don't want to hinge the development of current.
No.
The development of current, let's, you were talking about the north side of town. Is this going to make the north side of town have low water pressure, just like the southwest part of town did?
The, the map that Mr. McNichols sent you today, identify some of those areas. That was a real rough and quick evaluation. It was only looking at static pressure, but there was real limited areas in the city limits that, that were in that area. It could be, you know, we don't have a, it's definitely affecting Tower Park. That's probably the major area that I know of within city limits. There's possible that there's more that we haven't, you know, if an area hasn't developed, we may not have studied it in depth in the, in the water model.
How far in the process do you, I mean, once you get it, I don't know. How far in the process do you have to get if the land is purchased, is starting to develop? Isn't there an expectation that that's, that water is going to be a certain, it just sounds to me they're kind of being surprised at this state.
The preliminary plat does not require that a full analysis to extend water mains to provide infrastructure be done. That's, that's not required because the preliminary plat is more of an overview of how the property will be laid out and divided, how the existing infrastructure offsite will connect through the property. Can it connect? What potential for easements or other dedications may be out there to, to develop the property? Once the preliminary or the concept plan, and I use that term very loosely, is approved by the Planning Commission, then that gives the go-forward ticket to the developer and the designer to come back in and say, okay, now let's put pen to paper and really figure out how much water pressure is out there. That will determine if we can develop, how much we can develop, and then that is being designed along with sewer, sidewalks, streets, detention facilities, all of those required improvements that are necessary. Sometimes the layout of that final plat does adjust based on that hard drill down into what infrastructure is out there and can be extended in compliance with the, the standards that the city has adopted.
So as it stands right now, it's understood that, that, I mean, like you said earlier, the rules can change until that plat is finalized, until you finalize that plat. Until that process occurs, it's understood by everybody that, that this is a fluctuating thing, that the standards can change.
I, I can't speak for everybody. Most developers in the community and specifically the designers that are, are working side-by-side with the developers to lay out all of the infrastructure in the plats, they are aware that, yes, laws do change, standards do change, expectations change as well. We have recently had a subdivision plat that the preliminary was done about 10 or 12 years ago, and a final was filed off of it. Well, recently, the rest of the preliminary came through, but because there had been a code adoption in between the preliminary and the more recent final, the lots had to be redesigned, some of them did. If I recall correctly, there was an actual lot that had to be foregone for a secondary access road. So yes, it is subject to change depending on what law or standard is in effect at the time that that final is submitted and designed.
So we know the southwest side is going to be okay by 2018. Do we know that on the north side? Are we okay on the north side?
Water 2040 is not addressing the northeast zone.
That's what I thought.
Well, let me just say, in the one area that we know that there is a problem, we think we have a partnership solution, or at least we're working on that. And it should, if we get that partnership together and if the council approves it, it should cure the entirety of the North Tower Park issue.
But that's just Tower Park. There's still north, there could be north issues.
There could be north issues outside the city system.
That's right, yeah, outside the city limit, city limits, we know we have issues on, on the rural system.
I just don't want another southwest. I don't want to kick the can.
Well, and there has been one pretty good-sized pump installed, has there not? Or there's plans for one to new addition north.
Well, in the, part of what we're doing to address the issues in the, in the rural water systems that we acquired is making similar improvements to what we do in town, which includes design and construction of a pump station and a new water tower along Yost Road, which will improve pressure for, you know, a great area, northern, a large area of the northern rural system. So we, as we identify these issues, you know, we prioritize them, we come up with solutions and we work through them. We just can't do them as fast, as quickly as we'd like.
I think what we're trying to tell you is we see no impending problems in the north area outside of those elevation problems that we have. Is that correct?
Right. There's, yeah, I don't know of any imminent problems besides North Tower Park. And, and the developer and their engineers, you know, are working towards solutions just for their proposed developments, but also trying to work together to come up with something that benefits, you know, the whole wider area, benefits the city, the city's customers as well as the developer.
Okay. Councilors, is there a motion?
Well, I don't know, I, I don't know that, we just needed some direction and I think we got that. The, like, the one thing left that perhaps we need final clarification on is if the commuter models show that there is no adverse impact on other residences in the southwest power zone, power, pressure zone, or the Power Rangers or somebody, is there an exception? Because we know that that will be fixed in a year and a half.
So we're only talking about the southwest?
Southwest pressure zone.
And this exception falls within the minimum 25 DEQ?
Oh, absolutely. And, and no adverse impact on existing?
Right.
And it's going to be okay by 2018?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and I just, it doesn't impede the current, I mean, I just, once again, I just don't want to impede the current development that's happening. They're already moving forward with it. Just, I don't want to ramrod it just because we're, I mean, I don't.
I don't disagree with you, but we did that already with this. I mean, we, we didn't let those lots have their water. We didn't let them subdivide those lots at the, this last meeting because they weren't going to meet 40. And that was a, I mean, those, you know, that had been planned out, you know, under, assuming that they only had to meet 25. And so we, we already said, sorry, we're going to enforce this standard and have, you know, change the rules on that applicant after the fact at some level. I mean, right?
Were they far in the process, though?
Well, they had applied for the plat, right? I mean, isn't that what we denied, the plat?
Yes, for a replat of an existing lot. In, in that particular area, it is not in the southwest pressure zone.
I know.
So any action on the southwest pressure zone, we still need determination for other areas of, of the community. That particular item or subdivision has a couple of things going on. They have a minor subdivision where currently, prior to cutting an existing lot into three pieces, they would like to get a water connection on that one existing lot. And that has been a difference of interpretation of the council's policy directive. So that's another item.
They applied to subdivide that lot?
They applied to subdivide, but it was loud and clear, no new lots unless 40 PSI. So now they have applied for...
No, we decided that at the meeting after they applied.
They have applied for a building permit on the existing lot, and they are not intending to subdivide until they do work or in partnership with the city, work is done to reach the 40 PSI.
Yes, but all of that changed after our determination that they, we weren't going to allow them to subdivide because they weren't going to meet 40 PSI on the new lots.
Correct.
Right. So this, this extension of the policy to say, it used to just be water mains, but now we're going to extend it to service connections on a new lot, came about after they had planned to subdivide, thinking that the 25 was there, right?
Yes.
So I'm all, I'm in favor of that policy, but if we're talking about the fact that we don't want to impose it on people who had an expectation and started the process with an expectation of they were only going to meet 25, that, I mean, we're going to leave, I mean, you're going to have one person who got, you know, who had it changed after they had an expectation of 25, and then we're saying, but now for everybody else, we're not going to, we're not going to make you change your plans. And so that, that just feels a little problematic to me.
I, I think your, your notice, your, your, what we actually have this listed as for purposes of compliance with the Open Meetings Act is probably not sufficient for you to do any motions tonight. The idea was to simply get some clarification, and obviously we've learned that this is probably a much larger issue than we had envisioned. It's probably best that maybe that an item come back where staff has maybe worked through these issues and presented some proposals to you to, that you could actually vote on.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yes.
And now you understand why staff couldn't come to consensus.
Okay, before we, well, we'll get through this agenda and then I'll ask anyone if they want to break before we keep moving on because this is a marathon. All right. This takes us to, thank you, staff. Number nine, resolution. Am I right? Resolution number CC 2017-10. A resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year 2017-18. Counselors, discussion.
Nice work. Yeah. A lot of work. It's a little bit too early to approve that, though. Should we wait till June?
That's a written rule.
I thought you were saying that seriously. I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-2017-10. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the operating budget is approved, 2017-18. Nice, nice work. City manager and everybody, and everybody else, Melissa.
All the department managers, the employees out in the field that are taking up slack, you know, it's everybody.
Everybody. So we're just saying thanks to you so you can tell everybody thank you.
Thank you.
It's not all heaped on you.
See, I was kind of anticlimactic. I was waiting for like the balloons to drop and confetti, you know.
It's not in the budget.
If it was a better budget, yeah.
Well, if we blow the balloons up ourselves. All right. Ordinance, ordinances on second reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3364. An ordinance closing a portion of a general utility easement located at property addressed at 1201 West Sixth Avenue.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept resolution, or CC-2017-, no, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 335, 3364. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, three, ordinance number 3364 is approved, is adopted, sorry. On second reading, Mr. Dorman, item B.
Ordinance number 3365. An ordinance closing the north 120 feet of right-of-way at Duncan Street. That property addressed is 821 North Duck Street, 823 North Duncan Street, and 821 North Husband Street.
Discussion.
No dis, no.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3365. Please vote. Ordinance number 3365 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to reports from officers and board. City attorney.
Anything to report tonight, ma'am?
City manager.
Two quick items, Mayor. One, for about seven weeks now, we've been using free chlorine for disinfecting drinking water, and that was precipitated by a malfunction in the ammonia feed in the, at the plant. That is repaired, and we know that there's been some inconvenience to our customers with that. I'm pleased to announce to you that barring complications, that Monday, the 22nd, we will be switching back to chloramines.
Thank you.
And one of the reasons for that delay was because town was so full of people, we needed access to the fire plugs, and we're going to be squirting a lot of water in a lot of places. So you'll see water flowing in a lot of places.
We appreciate everybody's patience on this and thank you to everybody who's worked on this because this has been a huge project and it was handled in a, in a very good manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Item next, and people watching tonight may wonder, why in the heck is he saying this? There are a lot of citizens that think that we have some kind of control over Suddenlink. We do not. They are a private business. We have a franchise agreement with them. Tuesday night, when you go to bed, when you get up the next morning, if you have not gone and gotten some digital boxes from Suddenlink, you will not be receiving TV.
Even if you have a HD TV?
Well, there are some TVs that'll work and some that it won't. And according to the information from Suddenlink, and frankly, this is what I did at home, if you put the TV on channel 97 and it says, no signal, or it won't even display channel 97, you need to go get some digital boxes from them. And because their road's torn up, they are going to have people at Bradford Plaza on Wednesday and Thursday all day and half of Friday. And they're really concerned that their public outreach has not worked very well. But I want to remind folks that the city cannot help you. If you don't have a signal when you get up Wednesday morning, you need to get ahold of Suddenlink. And probably the best way to do that because of their local... And probably the best way to do that, because of their location and the Sixth Avenue, Sixth and Perkins Road project, would be to go to Bradford Plaza.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful, and.
Pardon?
Where's Bradford Plaza?
Bradford Plaza is, um, Sixth and Lewis, or Sixth and Perkins.
Sixth and Perkins.
Perkins and McElroy, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sixth and Perkins is where they're fixing the road.
Tune into channel ninety-seven to test it yourself, so you will now evade. Yeah.
Well, so I'm all wrong tonight. And I'm glad you mentioned that, because I don't want people going to the wrong place.
So it's the one near Hobby, uh, Food Pyramid?
Food.
Yes, Maine and Hall of Fame.
Old Navy, Ulta, it's in that shopping.
I barely know the names of streets around here.
And you can go to their business as well on E6, but it, it would be much easier for you to go to Bradford Plaza if you haven't gotten the boxes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, city counselors, do you have some news?
Well, if you're tired of talking about important things, you could go to Friday Food Trucks and Toons, this Friday, May nineteenth. It's, will be downtown on Seventh between Maine and Husband. It will be starting a little bit earlier, five-thirty. Live entertainment from Aaron Woods Band, Good Company, and Morgan. That one band?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Counselor Zanotti, do you have something?
I do. It's hard to believe we're talking Memorial Day, but reminder that most City of Stillwater offices will be closed Monday, May twenty-ninth, to observe Memorial Day. For Monday waste collection customers, trash and recycling will be picked up as usual. Yard waste, however, will not be collected.
So don't mow your yard.
That's right.
Counselor Joyce?
Yeah, looking southwest from Stillwater, there's a new feature on the horizon, the Forty-Fourth Avenue Water Tower. The pedestal is now ninety-two feet tall and ready for the water bowl to be placed on top. I assume this is a very large water bowl. This is part of the 2040 water program. Both the Central Zone and the Forty-Fourth Avenue Water Towers are, are part of the, the Water 2040 program. The towers will provide an additional one million gallons of water storage to support increasing water demands through the year 2040. For more project updates, go to the current project section at stillwater.org.
Thank you. And Counselor Wedlock?
That water bowl is ready to provide forty PSI for all plats.
At least.
At least.
We want sixty to eighty.
Registration for Stillwater Public Library's summer reading programs is now open. The summer programs are not just for children, but are open to teens and adults as well. All clubs offer activities, reading suggestions, and family movies each week. And for more information on this, go to library.stillwater.org.
Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the city council meeting is adjourned. I will ask if anyone needs a break, or if you want me to continue, continue, okay.
I'll throw it.
Okay. We are going to the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting, and I'm gonna call the meeting to order for May fifteenth. Trustees, consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove an item or have more clarification? Or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us to resolutions. Resolution number SUA 2017-5. A resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2017-18. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, SUA 2017-5. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, SUA 2017-5 is approved. That takes us to missile, our reports from officers and boards. General counsel?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
General manager?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Trustees?
Nothing to report.
Oh, ma'am.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn Stillwater Utilities Authorities. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is adjourned. That takes us to, I'm gonna go next to the Stillwater Public Works Authority. Call the meeting to order. Consent docket. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item or clarify or approve?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That moves us to number five, resolutions. Resolution number SPWA seventeen-oh-one, a resolution of the Stillwater Public Works Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2017-18. Trustees, discussion or motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Not a lot of activity in that one.
We have, we have a motion and a second to approve. Resolution SPWA seventeen-oh-one. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, it is accepted, and that takes us, well, that's the end of this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Public Works Authority is adjourned, and that brings us to Stillwater Academic, academic, where am I today? Stillwater Economic Development Authority. I call the meeting to order, and trustees, consent docket. Does anyone wish to remove an item or approve or clarify?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That brings us to resolutions. Resolution number SEDA seventeen-one, a resolution of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2017-18. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve SED, SEDA seventeen-one. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, SEDA seventeen-one is approved. And that brings us to reports from officers and boards. Item A.
Withdraw my request for an executive session. I have nothing else to report tonight.
Did you say withdraw?
Withdraw, yes, ma'am.
Ooh, I wanna clap.
One of those balloons.
Thank you. General counsel? General manager?
Nothing, ma'am. Thank you.
Trustees?
Oh, ma'am.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero.